Good evening, day five of our budget deliberations. And we, as a reminder, we will be meeting again tomorrow at 6:30 for the Harbor Master interview and then we will start budget deliberations again tomorrow at 7:00. So this evening, I would like to keep the meeting to two hours. We would like to end by 9:00 PM. But again, we will be back tomorrow and again on Monday. So, as I mentioned last night, we, I'm just gonna give you how this evening will go. We're going to start with public comment. And after that, we are going to have a presentation from our Director of Park and Rec, Park and Recreation Pam Geary. And I see that there are some other members of the Park Commission and the RTM, I think, perhaps?
Yes.
So after Pam's presentation, you know, probably a five-minute presentation, we will then take comments from those representatives from those, from the Commission or the Committee, if they want to add any information to that. Then we will open it up to questions from the Board of Selectmen. After that, I have, we will move on to budget deliberations. And I've asked Kate to help us focus a little bit here by preparing a few different worksheets that will give us alternative scenarios to help us narrow our focus. And so this evening, after she goes through a few of these scenarios, I think that it will help us all understand the ramifications of any cuts or additions that we wish to make. So we will go through any of those cuts or additions this evening, but I don't want anyone to feel like this is, you know, you have to have all of those decisions made this evening. Remember, we will be back tomorrow. And I think that the information you see that Kate worked on later today, I think that you'll find that helpful. And again, we'll meet back tomorrow to go through the final deliberations. And, okay, if I didn't miss anything, we will start. Did I miss anything, Kate?
No, I think you've got it.
Okay, so we will start with public comment.
So if any member of the public wants to comment on the Board of Selectmen's budget so far, if you would put your name in the chat and then we'll call on you. Okay, I'm not seeing anything come into the chat right now, so if you wanted to move on.
Right, so let's move on to Pam.
Okay. Pam, the floor is yours.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get my screen out there. I got it. Okay, good evening. Hi there. So I was expecting that I might hear back from some of you in regards to materials that I sent to you on Sunday with any questions that you might have. I didn't receive any questions. I was looking at that perhaps as a good sign that the information I sent to you was pretty thorough. I will talk a little bit about the background information about the project. Originally, this was, I had gone out to the Darien Athletic Foundation and the Darien Foundation to see if they would like to partner in on this project to share in the expenses with the town doing an in-kind service while the foundations covered the financial side of it. With the Darien Athletic Foundation using their trusted contractor that they use for most projects. Having done that and met with the Board of Selectmen, the town attorneys, and it all came in agreement about this project, we went on to have the landscape designer design the project. We went to, we had public hearings, we went to EPC, we went to the Sewer Commission, we went to PNZ, and we had approvals, those approval processes. Then we had the Darien Athletic Foundation's contractor give us a quote on the project, which we were quite surprised at how high it was because the original quote through the landscape architect was just over a million dollars. And the FBG, FGB contractor came in at 1.9. So, and of course then, you know, 2020 hit. We had just sat down just before the pandemic to try to see what we could do to reduce the expenses of the project. So we, Jen, Susan Daly, Jim Flynn, myself and the contractor, and Dan Biggs kind of tossed around things like taking out the asphalt pathway and putting in crushed stone, which had saved quite a bit of money, even though that would have taken away a lot of the ADA components of the pathway. And like I said, at that point, as we were going back to the drawing board, everything was put on hold. So as we went through the year, I kept in touch with the Darien Athletic Foundation, who still felt very enthusiastic about the project. But a year went by and we hadn't really gotten to any point. So the Commission in December really felt it was time for the town to put this project in the capital improvement budget. And that it was worthy enough and it certainly speaks to our Park Master Plan. It's, according to our survey, it was a top three things that residents wanted to see was additional trails and to speak to the health and wellness of the community. And certainly in the last two years, it showed the essential, that parks were very, super essential to the residents. And certainly with Weed Beach, we don't get the opportunity to utilize that entire property. And with this project, not only would we utilize the majority of the project property, we would also be utilizing the short lane property that the town spent a million dollars on in 2013, I believe it was. So it's been, you know, quite a long time. Matter of fact, that was the first project in 2014, or 15 when I was hired, was to figure out what to do with that property. So I think it's a sound project. It's exciting. It offers, you know, year-round things to do for the residents. And at this point, I hear what you're saying in the last meeting that you were hesitant about the costs because of supplies having gone up. But I will speak to the fact that there was a big difference between a landscape design general quote versus the contractor's quote. This would be a project where we would have to go out to bid and get numerous estimates. So I anticipate that there would be, you know, lower, you know, for instance, Weed Beach project in 2013 went out to bid. It was a $3.3 million project, but it came in under budget, 3.1. And I don't know if anybody else has any other questions for me.
Pam, was the public input limited to surveys? Or did you have focus groups or any kind of a larger outreach to test this? I know that it won't be nearly as controversial as the Pear Tree Point effort, given the fact that you're not building large buildings or anything like that. But there still is the prospect of flooding and all of that. And I'm just kind of curious as to how extensive your public input was into this particular plan.
You know, we had public hearings throughout 2019 with the Commission, and then we had public hearings with EPC and with PNZ. And I just think through the process of working with the Commission on this, we, I think we got the information out to the public pretty well and did a survey to, we did a survey to the surrounding neighbors as well about that. And I had very little feedback. Maybe one resident had emailed me about wanting to have better tree coverage along Rowan Bay. But other than that, there was a lot of excitement about it.
Okay, thanks.
Hi Pam, I had sent an email on Sunday, actually. I had had some questions for you. And so I can go over them now. I'd really like to see an updated quote, particularly with the lumber, given the fact that it's over two years old. I mean, I know with just cherry lawn alone is 40% higher than it was the previous year. We were gonna have to use a different kind of wood than your normal lumber. This is, you know, in a flood zone, we're gonna have to be paying attention to what the cost. I don't know, we were in discussions, you know, two and a half years ago about is it, do we want to do Tyvek? Do we want to do the Epe wood? If I'm saying it wrong, I apologize. There was a lot of discussion about what kind of wood, right? And my concern is that lumber is exponentially higher than it was. So I'm very uncomfortable with that particular portion of the project. I don't know how much it is. I believe that's gonna be the biggest portion of this project. And one of the things I was looking for is kind of a breakout of what maybe the individual parts of this project would be. I think genuinely, I love the idea of doing some work there. I love the idea of some trails. I love the idea of what can we do with the meadow or do we do an amphitheater? I know there were some discussions about that. But what I'm concerned about is that the, what was sent was more of kind of an overall picture of like, here's how it could look. And not that I'm looking for an a la carte menu, but I do want to understand what some of these pieces are. My concern is that it's, we're in budget season. And this is a building committee project. This is a big project. And we don't have the particular cost laid out. I want to do some work there. I want to do some trails. I just want to understand, and particularly with that lumber piece, that's the biggest piece right now to me. But I don't know. I mean, has mulch or gravel or whatever we're gonna be using gone up? And Kate would have a better idea. You know, I don't know how much the trees for Highland were. Were they higher than they have been in the past? I don't know. We want to do some nice landscaping with that meadow kind of area or the amphitheater. I don't know what the cost would be. And maybe it is 1.9, but maybe it's closer to 2.7. I just don't know. And if we go and approve 1.9, do we go back to the RTM and then ask for more money later? I mean, I want to make sure that we do this right. I know that if we, you know, talk and get some maybe updated quotes, we can still, this is not saying no to the project. I just want to have a better understanding of the numbers.
Well, as I had said before, and I apologize for not getting that other bid that I had told you I'd gotten. I did get that a couple of years ago. I shared it with Jen Montanaro. I'm gonna see her tomorrow to see if she has that as well. But again, that would be two years old too.
Right.
So I have no problem reaching out to somebody else to get another quote, a current quote. And I'll work on that right away. And because we do have the design and the layout. So, you know, we were looking at doing that as a whole this time. And you're right, there's lots of elements when it comes to the material that can be used for pathways and the boardwalk. I mean, you can use cement. Cement, quite honestly, with our test course, we're going post tension because it's the smartest thing to do. It's more expensive, but it lasts longer. And that's the same thing when we look at these trails. We can go with crushed stone, but there's a lot more maintenance involved. Asphalt's a little bit more expensive, but more maintenance, doesn't last as long, cement lasts longer. So there's a whole slew of things to look at. But that would be the building committee's job as well. So let me work on getting another quote to see, you know, to your thoughts, and we can go from there.
Just given that the numbers are so high, right? I mean, this is a $150,000 project. I'd be like, yeah, let's put aside whatever with the, you know, 20%, 30%, whatever contingency, but those are, those are really big numbers.
Right. It's a big project.
Yeah.
Pam, this is Mike Burke, and thank you for sending the materials along. And without making our meeting, you know, longer, I feel like I'm in the same spot as Sarah. It just doesn't feel in the form that I couldn't, good faith, approve. They're just, I need to have updated numbers and what it would be now, not two years ago as a DAF. Are they, are they interested in really contributing funds to the project? It just, I understand the great benefit to the community and the desire of the community. It's just sitting in the chair and now I can't in good faith approve it, which isn't to say that, you know, down the road with more information, et cetera, I would be sitting in a different spot. But thank you for getting all that you had to us so quickly.
You're welcome.
Marcy, do you have any thoughts?
I think I'm just gonna echo what Mike and Sarah and John's concern are all. You know, it certainly is a beautiful project and we would be excited to see that we could roll it out at some point. You know, heaven, we do have complete numbers. And I'd like to get an idea on what the Darien Athletic Foundation is willing to contribute to that as well. You know, what is their, what is their weight in this project as well?
So I think that we should consider this a project that we are all in support of with the understanding that we need much more up-to-date numbers. And we would like to see what alternative funding sources we have to be included in this. But I'm, I am getting the feedback from the board that we are in support of this, of this project. It's very exciting. And I have one question, Pam. As far as the permitting and the okays from the different commissions, was that, were those ever received or did you not get that far?
No, they were received and they're good for five years.
For five years? Okay, okay. So let's revisit this then, okay? Is there anyone from Park and Rec, from the Commission or the Committee that wants to speak to us?
Lori's on.
Okay, Lori?
Hi, everybody. Thanks for giving us time on this. You know, most of the points that I want to make, Pam, you know, Pam has made, we've had the short lane property for close to 10 years now. When I joined the Commission eight or nine years ago, that was one of Jamie Stevenson's properties, you know, priorities was to figure out what to do with that land. The taxpayers paid for it and it's been sitting there basically unusable for the better part of a decade. So the taxpayers have paid for a piece of property that we cannot use. We're really looking to do something that is minimally invasive to fill in and remediate the wetlands, connect the part that was cleared out by the town staff to the beach, to expand usable beach space and land for our residents, and put in walking trails, which we know in town are very much, you know, welcomed and needed. So, you know, this is minimally invasive and it's consistent with the Weed Beach Master Plan that was done back when we did the big project and put up the paddle hat and the new bath house. But that piece wasn't funded at the time. 2006, here we are, 2022, still haven't finished that plan. It was updated in the 2018 All Parks Master Plan to have these walking trails. So it's been out there for a while and we just keep feeling like the can keeps getting kicked down the road. You know, my only concern as Chair of the Commission is to really understand what our various boards', you know, appetite is for, you know, major parks improvements. The last major park project that this town does was, in fact, Weed Beach. Since then, the only reasonably large things, you know, we've really done in terms of something new is, you know, the Diller project, which was paid for by private funding, the basketball court, private funding, pickleball, private funding. The town really hasn't stepped up other than for maintenance and repairs to really do any new projects. And I think the Commission really wants to understand, and we could have many conversations, of really, you know, the support for improving our parks. So I think that's really what I want to put out there. I understand, of course, we have to update the numbers. But, you know, I guess we just don't want to feel like we're chasing our tails. If there's really no, not an appetite or the town doesn't feel we can prioritize projects like this, then the land is just gonna continue to sit and be unusable. And I think that's a real shame. So I think that's where the Commission is and we really just, you know, need to understand as we start re-energizing conversations about this, about where we grow with Pear Tree, et cetera. You know, we're going to have to understand what that level of commitment is so that the Commissioners feel that they can be effective.
Well, just to reiterate what the first Selectman said, I think that there is enthusiasm, an appetite for these projects in terms of vision. But again, these are taxpayer dollars. So we have to really truly understand what we're buying ourselves into. If this was just a couple hundred thousand dollars for some walking paths, I mean, I'm sure it would be a different story as Selectman Newman pointed out. But we just have to understand the long-term implications of the dollars that we're committing to. And that's, and that's really it. I mean, I'm sure we all love things that will make our town more beautiful and exciting. They just have to be, you know, vetted in a detailed way. And that's really, I think, from my perspective, is what, you know, I'm looking to do here with this project. So I appreciate your enthusiasm for it.
No, I fully understand that. I spent enough years on the Board of Finance with Mr. Zagrotzky to understand all of that. But, you know, at the same time, you know, the Commission needs, you know, we need to hear that conceptual, you know, belief that, you know, improving a park is as worthy an investment as, you know, building the town garage or some of the other projects that have, you know, that have to do. We just need to understand that the commitment is there. And if we're hearing that tonight, that's to reference. But just sometimes we hear, well, if you can come up with private money, go ahead. But at some time, I think the town has to have some say in the game.
Okay. I think we're all very supportive of improving our parks. The amount of usage that our parks have seen, particularly over the past couple of years, is phenomenal. We all want to support it. But at that level of dollars, we need to see some detail.
Understood.
Especially if it's a, you know, if it's a cement walkway, it is somewhat invasive. But I, but I do want to see dollars. It's not about not doing anything with the parks, Lori. This is the first time that we've talked about Weed Beach. I know that things maybe didn't, you know, continue with Pear Tree. We still need to do work of Pear Tree. I support things of Pear Tree. There's no, you know, there's no conversation that says we don't want to do anything.
Okay. But that's what we just need to understand. With a new Select Board, you know, we really need to understand that level of interest on this is, on these as, you know, priorities for the town. So it's important for the Commission to hear that.
Yeah, I certainly, as I was thinking about this project, I was, you know, trying to compare the wants and the needs. And I will tell you, as a mom with young kids, being at Weed Beach and watching kids on their bikes ripping through that parking lot with tons and tons of cars going by, it is certainly a liability, right? But there is nowhere for kids to safely ride their bikes, going up and down, going from, you know, Henley and driving their bikes down to Weed Beach and ripping around that parking lot with people coming in and out. So it's not just a want. And I totally understand that. It is a need for the town. We definitely need a safe space for kids to be able, young children to be able to, you know, ride bikes and play on their scooters and play with their, you know, play on their roller skates. So I agree that, you know, me as a board member, I certainly am incredibly supportive of a project like this going on. We have to make the numbers work. In the end, we have to make the numbers work. And to do that, we have to have the real numbers. And we don't have those right now. Yep.
So Pam, go ahead, Pam.
So I'm just wondering how much time I have. Give me a time where I can get back to with a quote.
You know what, you know what I would like to do is I would like to pursue the, some alternative funds being invested in this project also. As you mentioned, we're meeting tomorrow with someone. So I don't, I don't want you to feel like you have to give it in for this budget cycle. I think this is actually a project that will stand on its own. And when you have the full numbers and perhaps you have some comps for if we do wood, if we do gravel, helping all of our questions, these are just questions that you're going to come, you know, you're gonna hear from the RTM, you're gonna hear from the Board of Finance. So I think a well-thought-out, this is a great idea. Not sure it's a great idea. And I think that when I say this, I'm speaking for the whole board, that we are very in favor of looking into this project. But we need solid numbers and this isn't quite ready for prime time right now. But you have our interests. So don't feel like you have, you know, the sooner we can get this moving, the better. But I can see this as a standalone, not necessarily being loaded on into the budget. Is that any objection?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay. Any other thoughts on this exciting project? No? Okay, we'll move on. Thank you so much, Pam. Thank you. Anyone else that is from Park and Rec, thank you for all you do for us. Okay, so now we're going to move on to budget deliberations. And as I mentioned, Kate is going to go through some worksheets that I think will help us understand the ramifications if we have, if we pass the budget as it is with our proposed expenditures and some numbers that will help us understand if we look at alternatives such as adding or subtracting. So I'll turn it over to Kate.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen, make sure I pick the right one. So first I need to give credit to Jen. She's the one who developed a lot of these spreadsheets. Trying to get, there we go. There are multiple ways that we could look at the numbers comparing this year to last year. And so Jen prepared several different ways, you know, we can approach it, comparing just the operating from one year to the other with not counting the debt, not counting capital. You see, the increase in expenditures is about 2.3 when you look at that viewpoint. The amount that we'd have to raise taxes is up 5% and that's due to less non-tax revenues. The change in the mill rate would be about 3.16%, pretty minimal. If we add the capital back in, the numbers change slightly. Going to a 4% increase in the amount raised by taxes, 2% increase in the mill rate. This is the one that's gonna be a little scary. If we look at all in, last year's budget as it was adopted, this year's budget including the capital contribution, you can see how much the numbers are up. But this here, you can see the capital contribution, that's the, you know, that's where the difference is. If we go back and make the assumption, trying to compare apples to apples, make the assumption that the Board of Finance had funded capital projects last year in the way that they typically had in the past with a capital contribution from the General Fund. You see, our total Board of Selectmen budget would be up at this point 3.5%. Amount raised by taxes up 5.6% and the estimated mill rate up 3.65%. So, you know, a lot depends on how you want to look at it. So I want to throw some numbers out at you before we start, some statistics. And I'm gonna make this a little bit bigger. All right. To move the mill rate 1.01, you need to make a change of $87,000. That's either adding revenues or cutting expenses. For the average homeowner, that 0.01 movement relates, equates to $11.20 in taxes. So the change for the average homeowner on their tax bill, just for the Board of Selectmen, if we go as-is all-in, it's $537. If we were to look at it without the capital or the debt, that increase just from our operating, the things that you control, that's $112.
Kate, will you explain how you're defining an average taxpayer?
Oh yeah, sorry about that. The average market value of a home in Darien is $1.6 million. So the assessed value for that is $1.12 million. So then what I did, going back to the other spreadsheet, you'll see Jen calculated what the mill rate was last year versus what it would be this year just for the Board of Selectmen numbers. So I applied those numbers from the various scenarios to that average home. So getting down to, here's the real number. If you're looking at things as-is, not accounting for the change in funding that the Board of Finance put in last year, where they didn't make a capital contribution from taxes, you would need to reduce the budget that's been presented to you by $4.1 million to have no mill rate impact. Okay? So that's a big knock. And just to put some things in perspective, about 64% of the Board of Selectmen budget is personnel or contractual items related to personnel. And that does include the proposed positions, does not include debt, does not include capital. But those are, you know, a lot of that, we talked today about what's discretionary, what's nondiscretionary. That's kind of hard to put your arms around because you could say that a lot of employees are discretionary, completely discretionary. Departments, whole departments could be considered completely discretionary. You could do away with them. There are things like legal fees, insurance, that's, you know, nondiscretionary. So more perspective, the library budget is 11.6% of our Selectmen's operating, not including debt. So more perspective, the library budget is 11.6% of our selectmen's operating, not including debt and capital. And then things like legal counsel, risk management, utilities, solid waste, IT, those things all fall in a range of 2% to 3% of our operating budget. Some other numbers I want you to know. We had a reduction of over 5%, almost 6% in non-tax revenues in this, in this estimated budget. It is offset by a healthy increase in the grand list of 1.87%.
But a big portion of that reduction in revenues is building permits which we received. It was, there was a pop last year, so.
Right.
Okay, it, it's a, it's, it's a reduction in the, in the number, but that's because we had a one-off great year.
Right, and it was, and that was expected. So I did, I resurrected an old spreadsheet that I had from years ago when I worked in finance where we could plug numbers in and see what impact they had on the mill rate. So I'm going to make that a little bigger. So, you know, you could do, like here, we're showing that right now the mill rate would be at 4.82. So if I cut $100,000, you can see that it drops that mill rate down a little bit. And we do always round to.
Your spreadsheet, year-over-year summary.
Say that again?
We still just see the year-over-year summary, we can't see what you're working with.
Really? Well, that's just not fair.
Though I'm sure it's fabulous.
I'm sure it is. Okay, hang on a second. Did you see the, okay, let's see, do that again. Go to a pic, maybe I have to go back out every time? Okay, do you see now one that's pretty with pink and orange?
Yes, we do.
Okay. All right, so what I did here, by changing this number here that's orange, if I go to zero, the number in blue is going to change. So if you said to me, well, you know, what happens if we cut the IT person from the police department? Well, I know that was about, you know, say $145,000. You know, your mill rate drops down to 4.81.
So Kate, just rough numbers, if, say we're one, we're one-third of the budget.
Yep.
Say that the Board of Ed comes in at the same rate of increase as we have right now. That would be a $1,500 approximate increase in taxes for the average taxpayer. Is, is that a fair way to look at this?
I think so. But when Jen, in your non-tax revenues, are you including the ECS grant?
Yes.
Okay.
Because that comes in on our side.
Yeah, so, yeah, I think that's a, a good rough approximation.
Okay, so, so committee, that, that means that if we, we stick with what we just, what we kind of ended up with last night with our expenditures, we are looking at a $1,500 tax increase for the average taxpayer. And this does not include the Weed Beach project, okay? That would be, that would be a separate project. It's already been pulled out of these numbers.
It has?
It has.
It's not impacting the mill rate in any way.
Got it.
Neither are the three fire trucks. And that's because we recommended, or I recommended that those items be funded through bonding.
So remember what John said last night, that, you know, obviously we have an opinion, but the Board of Finance will decide how to pay for all of this, right? So you, you might say, well, why don't we bond everything? I would suggest it's because the Board of Finance won't agree to all that. John, could you give us some, a, a little bit of color on what happened last year as far as using general fund money to pay for some of these capital projects and what the, what the ramifications were and, and what was your thinking? And do you think that will be how the Board of Finance goes forward?
Yeah, that, a good question. So a little bit of background. The first point I'd make is that we, we tried on the Board of Finance to update our perspective on fund balance. And as a reviewer, the general fund, fund balance is essentially the town's reserves that can be drawn on in an emergency. And the capital rating, the ratings agencies and general best practice suggests that that fund balance be maintained at, at a percentage of budgeted revenues. And so what we did was we reset the policy for fund balance. And then over time, and, and as we looked at it, the fund balance number was, was higher in, in dollar terms and as a percentage of budgeted revenues than what our policy prescribed. And so in the middle of all this, and given the general stresses that everybody was sensing at the time with regard to spending money and tax increases and all of that, what we decided was that it was a good time to go ahead and start to pull down fund balance a bit to maybe offset some of these expenditures. And so what you're seeing is the result of that, is we, I forget the exact figures, but we used a fair bit of that surplus to, to pull that down. So one thing the Board of Finance may decide to do is to, in addition to bonding, they're in a position to pull down fund balance further to meet some of these expenditures and soften that. I don't know what the percentage is and where we're standing right now, Jennifer, you might have that handy as we're talking. So what is fund balance as a percentage of budgeted revenues? Do you have an estimate as by June 30th as to how much fund balance would be in excess of the floor that we set on the Board of Finance? Do you happen to have that while we're talking? Anyway, I'll keep talking. Okay, while you look for that. So, so, so we did that, and we did it eyes open, by the way, recognizing that the following tax year there, we'd, we'd be back to sort of normal business and that expenditures would, would reflect normal operations and that there would in fact be this sort of big jump because we used fund balance the prior year and didn't use it this year. So I, it's, it's bad to see tax increases, and I kind of get all that. I would just say that we really should be focused on making sure that the town is maintained and that operations are paid for. Whereas people don't like to see tax increases. On the other hand, we have a lot of capacity. This is Darien, Connecticut. This is not, you know, bridge border places that are, are, are under more financial distress and, and stress. So we do have the capacity to spend what we need to make sure that the town is maintained at the level that the residents expect here. I guess last, last thing I'd say is that keep in mind the Board of Finance does have the ability to continue to move things around and mitigate that. They may elect to do more bonding than what we think the Board of Finance is going to do based on the split between bonded and, and P and L items that, that we have in the current budget proposal. They may also pull fund down, fund balance down further. So there's still a chance that, that, that what we've proposed is, is going to come out lower than what, what you see here. So I wouldn't think about that too much. I mean, the Board of Finance will, will come up with additional measures. Jennifer, do you have that information?
I do. So we started the year with unassigned fund balance about $26 million, which was just over 17% of our current budget. We haven't had very large appropriations out of it. The year is going pretty well. So if anything, I would expect that we're going to add some to fund balance at the end of the year, but we'll probably be still around the 17%. That's on the current budget. Obviously, if the budget goes up, the base.
Yeah, so just to dimensionalize that, the Board of Finance policy is 12%?
Right.
So what, what's that dollar difference?
About 7.5 million.
Okay. I think actually in discussions with the Board last year, there was a general sense that in terms of prudence, closer to 15% would be better than the 12 that we even set as a floor. So even assuming that much richer number, the difference between 15 and 17% is, how much would that be, Jennifer?
I'll tell you in one moment. We would still be just under $3 million in excess.
Yeah, so there's almost enough in just excess fund balance to cover the unbonded capital expenditures in the current budget. So obviously, we've got to get through the Board of Ed budget and all, and all that. But I'm just saying that we do have the capacity. If we, if the Board of Finance decided that the submitted mill rate was too high, they've got capacity to bond more than we've suggested. They've got capacity to draw down fund balance and still maintain a perfectly prudent level of fund balance and get the mill rate in, in a lot better shape than what, what it seems like here. I guess the last thing I would say, and I've made this comments, these comments last year, and that is that it's one thing to kind of look at all, all the expenditures as Kate was, I think rightly pointing out on that spreadsheet and saying, you know, here's how much you could cut to actually get the mill rate down to zero or, or to what we had last year. I think the, in, in my talking to a variety of constituents, I think the bigger issue was less around coming in and say, wow, we're just going to not fund parks or cut police or do, do something drastic like that. But being able to represent honestly to them that, look, it is never fun to pay taxes, but you can be confident that the money we're spending is carefully thought through and as efficient as possible. That's why I brought up the other night, this notion that we've got kind of IT spread out all over everything and we've got 14 different accounts that have radios and we've got our fire protection services budgeted in all these different buckets where I can't go to the, to our constituents and say that in those particular areas that we, we are as efficient as possible, right? I can't represent that I've got a, a clear and, and coherent holistic view of how those services are being budgeted. And so I think, you know, we'll get through this budget cycle and, and, and things will be fine. I think it's incumbent on us in the, in the course of the, of this coming fiscal year that we give all this a lot more careful thought such that when we get to the budget process next year, that we can answer that question honestly, that it is as efficient as, as we think we can make it.
I can't speak to the, to the radios, but I do believe that our, the new IT committee will be very helpful.
I think I'm chairing that committee, so I better get with the program.
That's why I'm looking at you, John. I will say that, you know, I want to be, you know, keep everyone aware that we are looking at inflation for our residents on all costs, right? Hopefully their wages have also increased, but inflation is definitely something to consider. And I also, we are doing three major flooding studies, right? And these are small dollar amounts that we've invested now. But those studies will produce recommendations that will be very costly going forward. So I want to be cognizant of that and not push off too many items this year to, for, forward when we'll need that money for the flooding projects.
And by the way, don't forget that this still doesn't include ARPA money, right? We've got whatever, 6.4 million and a half of which we've received currently. The reality is, is that a lot of that is going to be spent in a way that offset, offsets planned town expenditures. Maybe we'll add some things that we hadn't thought of, but there's a good chance that we'll recommend that a fair bit of that ARPA money simply replace the taxpayer funding for some of these projects. And none of that's incorporated yet in the budget. So we're meeting again next week, hopefully with an initial slate of ideas that we can quantify later. But that's also going to be another sort of source of funding to lessen the impact of this particular budget. So it was just long way saying that there's a lot more to come on all this, and I, I think we'll be okay.
And Kate has mentioned over the course of the last few nights, different items. And if you, and if it would be helpful, we can come up with a list of the, kind of high level list of what we have in the budget that might be eligible for that, if, if that'll help you. So that's a big picture. And I'd love to hear your thoughts on this because it's, it really is going to drive the decision-making going forward. And that is, you know, is, is our goal as a board to produce a budget with no tax increases? Is that, is that a priority for us? Or is it a priority to provide the best services we can within a certain bandwidth of, of an increase in taxes? Or is, or do we just want to approve as much as we possibly can? Love to, love to hear board members' thoughts on this.
So I think after sitting in this board for three years, I think always being financially prudent is the goal we should all have in this town. We're spending tax dollars, you know, dollars. And I, and I think that's important. Unfortunately, as projects ebb and flow, we're going to have to spend and we're not always going to be able to have a 0% operating increase separate from contractual, you know, obligations. I, I, I think it is important for our town, given that so many have, as I mentioned before, used our parks and we need to keep those up. We need to maintain the standards that we have come to enjoy around town as far as the physical facilities. I think those are really important. Creating programs and taking care of our seniors and, and, and all of those things are really important. I think in overall, I, I think if we set a number, I, I don't, that's maybe an artificial target. I, I feel like, you know, we need to be financially prudent and, and some years are going to cost more.
Go ahead, Marcy, sir.
Oh, Mike, go ahead.
Oh, okay. I, no, I feel that, again, these are all taxpayer dollars. So what is our taxpayer, what are our constituents, what are our fellow citizens value outside of the schools, obviously, the things that they value within our purview? And I think that you want to walk around town and have the roads well-paid. Do you want the sidewalks not to have cracks? You want to have beautiful beaches? You want to have the, the signs when you come into town look good? Because it shows that we care about where we live. And I'm not a spendthrift in these matters, but I'm willing to extend to improve our infrastructure and beautify our town and have us be proud of it. I mean, one thing I can say from my other volunteer experience, and I, I, I'm sure John would concur, when it comes to infrastructure and projects, it's, you know, pay me now or pay me more later. And so you really need to be cognizant of, of that. But that's, you know, my overall philosophy, Monica, and I would say, so that was probably hewed towards the second scenario that you just espoused as opposed to a, you know, a hard cap as opposed to a prudent one.
Thanks, Mike. Well said. Marcy?
So I have to assume that we are in the bottom of the bowl of a growing pain that this town is, is feeling over the next, you know, four years as we shift with the growth that's happening around the community. And we, we have to make some large investments in order to prepare for the fact that our town infrastructure is going to increase. Whether our parks are going to be used even more than they already have been or our schools are going to, the size of our schools, the capacity there, the roads. We have a lot of projects that are happening around town right now that are going to, you know, do some, do some wear on our infrastructure. And I, I see a lot of this budget as preparing for that growth. And so certainly there is a massive increase that we're seeing that feels painful as we're, you know, about to go through the line items. But I see that at the end of the line, we are going to see, you know, much more, we're going to see an increase in our revenue. That's my assumption, because we are going to have, you know, obviously, new properties. We're going to have reassessments on property values over the next year. So I, I, I have to say that I, I, I agree with what John's saying, that we're going to be all right. Certainly, we want to be prudent. We want to make sure that every dollar that we spend is wise and it's what our constituents are looking for. But it is, it is the growth pain of, of what we will feel as the bright light in, in 18 months, 18 to 24 months.
All right, so are there any items in the budget that you, right now, would feel comfortable cutting?
I think if we could go through, I think there's, might be a couple of small things I would add back in.
Okay, we're not adding back in yet. We're still deducting, sorry. I'm sure there's, I'm sure that's an easy list. But is there anything that we would suggest could be removed?
Yeah, it won't affect the mill rate since I think the plan is to bond them. But I would like to take a more aggressive look at the fire apparatus schedule in terms of whether we need to do all these trucks this year. Let's just take another hard look at it. I think Kate's idea of resurrecting or, or redoing the consulting work on our overall fire protection strategy is a good one. And we ought to incorporate a review of that schedule with that effort. Unfortunately, we probably have to make a decision about whether we want to do all these trucks right now prior to having any recommendations from the professionals. But that's something that I think. But that's something that I think, that we would pick something, we might take a look at that. These trucks are not falling apart and so if there were a small delay, these are all sort of fine shades of degradation that we'd have to assess carefully. We don't want to put anybody at risk and we want to make sure we have enough fire protection assets in place. At the same time, this is a good time to think about stuff like that.
Okay. On the operating side, I want to, you know, adding headcount is always a big, a big decision. And adding a, an IT person to the police department, I see, I see the value of that, but I would like to have a conversation on that and get the, the board's feelings on that.
Yeah, echoing the comment I made last night, I think if, if they really need a help desk person and it frees up sworn officers to, to do public safety work, I think that's a good thing, but it's just a reminder that we, like, like our fire protection services, we don't really have that sort of clear holistic view about IT spend in this town. And are we doing this right? And it is all kind of pulled together in a way that makes sense. Like the police guys coming in and making the suggestion about having help desk work without Jeff Adams or some of these other IT folks on the line or part, part of the discussion to say, yes, I've looked at that particular proposal or initiative and for the things that are going on in the department and the way I see things townwide, I think that's a great idea. As we had none of that, this is just the chief trying to get help in a building, right? With, with, without any input from sort of the broader IT community in town. I think we've got to stamp all that stuff out.
Okay, John, 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 I did meet with Jeff Adams today.
Oh, you did say you were going to do that.
Yes. And I also met with the chief again today. And it's, I'm of the opinion that this is the right time to do this. And Jeff Adams supports that. The, the it's, it's terrific to have an expert in the police department that knows all of this, that also happens to be an officer. But you run the risk of that person leaving and that can happen. And I think that having a dedicated person to this will be beneficial to us in the long run. So I wanted to hear your thoughts first, but I, I wanted to say that I, I, I do support this this addition to the full-time employees for the police department.
I think, you know, I was with, with John a little bit on that, you know, thought. And then when the chief said last night, because I, I guess it was John who asked him the excellent question, is, is there a way to share this service or is it so particularized to police work that it has to be someone in that building, if you will? And, and the chief said it, it was. And so my lack of expertise in either policing or high-end technology made me sway me a little bit towards deference to the chief. But, I mean, it always gets my attention and it has for years when we added FTE anywhere and I feel like it needs to be a very, you know, high bar. But I feel like the, you know, the chief may have cleared it on that one.
Sarah?
Monica, I remember a couple of years ago, I guess it was before COVID, when Chief came during budget season and was talking about one of the officers that is in charge of all of the tech. And it was particularly detailed, Kate, I don't remember if it was in a regular meeting or budget, but just the amount of technology that this one officer was responsible for was giving Chief pause and it, and it gave me pause also because if this person left, we would be without someone to support that infrastructure. And it's so necessary because after every shift, there's so much that needs to get downloaded and, and we have to manage that now, you know. Any kind of request or lawsuit or whatever has to involve some of that material. I, I think it's necessary. I think unfortunately, as we move forward, that technology piece, it's going to be adding to our budget, it's not taking away.
Thank you.
Yeah, there, you know, Sarah, there are two parts to that. It's, you know, that, that officer could leave and take with him all that knowledge. But also the time that he's spending on IT and not being a police officer and the time that other officers, the records officer, Captain Marin, are spending on IT things and not being police officers. So having this position actually frees the people, the police officers up to do what they were trained to do. And to Mike's point about sharing, while, you know, I'm sure the chief would make this person available to us if we need it. One of the side effects, if this position is approved, is that George, who is our IT guy, will be freed up to spend more time on the rest of us because he won't have to be spending as much time on the police.
Okay, so if, so the IT person is already in our budget. It's in our numbers, right? So this isn't a discussion to add this person into the system. They are already on our proposed expenditures. So if we have no other, no other discussion on that, if nobody else has anything they want to say, then I, I think that we are in agreement that that employee should be funded. Is that correct? Okay, so, so employees, full-time or part-time, are a big part of our budget. So why don't we start there with, Kate, you want to go through the, the fire, the fire marshal and explain what you were thinking there? What, what, what you have currently budgeted and what the options are?
So the request was for two full-time fire marshals on July first, which would eliminate two part-time positions. What I proposed in the budget was one full-time, one increase in full-time on July first and thus the elimination of the part-time and making the second full-time January first. So I think, you know, what your options are at this point is, obviously you could decide no new full-time. We stay with the four part-timers. You could keep my proposal to have one additional full-time starting in July and leave the remaining three part-timers as-is. You could push the hiring of a full-time back to January. You could have two full-time back in January. I do think you absolutely are going to have to have another full-time fire marshal in this fiscal year based on the number of units that are going to be coming on probably before the, before the fall. We are going to need to be doing the inspections, the greater number of inspections. So you're going to have to add at least the one. And then it's, you know, you've seen the data. It's in, in OpenGov that, and Bobby did send out the updated spreadsheet showing how their workload is going to grow. So I guess, you know, what's your comfort level? You know, hedging our bets. The same way, you know, looking at other positions, you know, are we comfortable that these, all of these things will be added in the timeframe that we, we anticipate?
So Kate, it's hiring in January, in July and in January, two full-time? Or hiring in July and keeping the three part-time? And looking again in January?
Okay, let me go back to that in my head. So I proposed going from, right now we have four full-time, or four part-time. So going in two full-time. So going to three full-time in July, three part-time in July. And then in January, going to the fourth full-time and leaving two part-time. And recognizing that one of those part-time people is the, the blight officer. So that's what's in the budget. And I think you could basically, you know, kind of pick and choose where your comfort level is with when we add that full-time. But I really do believe we need another full-time person in this fiscal year.
If, if the estimates were wrong or you felt all of a sudden we needed more inspectors to get these projects then approved or the COs done, is there an ability to go out into the market and get some temporary independent contractors to come in who are already certified? Who could run inspections and know what to look for and, and get those COs cleared? Or is it just a completely different discipline?
You know, it depends on how much, what level we go to. So one of the issues that we would be facing is the deputy fire marshal is a union position. Our current deputy fire marshal, because he is also the emergency management director, he's not in the union. He's a non-represented, but a straight-up deputy fire marshal is a union position. So that puts some restrictions on us in terms of what we can do. I think we could fill in with part-timers. I think we could find more part-time inspectors. The union would have to allow that because they've, they've allowed it currently. But the outsourcing might be a little bit difficult.
Yeah, I mean, I want to be conservative in the hiring. I just want to feel comfortable that we're covered if for some reason the need changes.
Yeah, I think if we, you know, if the need changed, I think, you know, and we couldn't afford to bring a full-time person on, I think we'd shoot for some more part-timers.
Thank you.
Can we just talk about the timeline of when some of these projects are coming live? I know that they're, you know, they've got the Nuroton Heights project. Those will have move-in dates before July, I'm assuming, correct?
It's summer and late fall for moving.
Okay, so the July, July would be a good need point for a full-timer to help establish and get those COs for that, that project, I'm assuming.
Well, it's not just that, it's the, you know, doing inspections as well.
Right, right.
Yeah.
But the other projects are not going to be live with real estate properties probably until summer of 2023, I'm assuming. Maybe.
Yeah, maybe.
Maybe.
Right, okay.
Which actually makes the case for delaying the one that I proposed to hire in January.
I think that's where my head is going. Which then also puts into the cars, right? Isn't there three requests for three commissioners?
Two.
So Kate, you want to explain how that would work?
The cars?
Yeah.
Well, what's in the budget was a request for a, a new vehicle and the radios to outfit it and to take a hand-me-down and outfit that one. They do need more than just a little sedan. They, you know, they do need the ability to carry a lot of equipment. But I've been taking a look, you know, one, you know, we have the possibility of getting a police car that's going offline and then all we need to do is outfit it with the radios and the paint jobs. The other possibility is we do have some vehicles assigned to people who I feel that the vehicles tend to sit too often in the day in the town hall parking lot. So I'd like to possibly take advantage of that for pool cars or if need be, if we need to make a cut in the budget, take one of those and assign it to a fire marshal.
The other thing I'm slightly concerned with, with all of these vehicles is the supply chain. I mean, it could be ten months before we can purchase a vehicle.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I know that that's definitely an issue that we have going forward to look at.
Kate, we had had a discussion in the past about what happens when some of the police vehicles are retired. Do we have any that are coming offline?
Sorry, I was muted. They usually don't come offline until the spring.
Okay.
But that has been disrupted by the supply chain.
Yeah, I'm sure.
John, any thoughts on this?
Very bad with muting, sorry about that. I think Marcy had the right comment earlier, which is we look at the developments. We look at the capacity that's being brought on in town. We look at not just residential, but commercial. The reality is, is we're going to have to spend to ensure the town services and assets keep pace with all that. I think part of what we're seeing is a manifestation of that and, and we shouldn't feel bad about making sure that the town is keeping up with it. I think if, if we do, even though it does result in higher taxes in some, some instances, that we're going to be able to show that there is in fact a match between what the town development looks like and what the town is making, and what we're doing as selectmen to make sure we're responsive to that. Keep in mind that there's a, a constant standard of service. I think everybody has expected when they moved into a town like Darien and there are times when we can mitigate the cost of that and then there are other times when we simply can't. And I think, given the fact that people recognize there's a lot of inflation, there's a lot of development that needs services. At the same time, they're benefiting from rising house values that, that come with improved development and town services. So I'm okay with this.
I think communicating that is, is good. So anyone else, Mike, give any thoughts on this?
Really, I'm in accord with what John is, what John is saying.
Okay. So are we comfortable with Kate's recommendation?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Kate, that is what we have currently reflected in the budget, correct?
What we have currently reflected in the budget is one starting in July and one starting in January.
Okay. And we are going with one starting in July and
Taking out the Jan-
Taking out the January. Is everyone, is everyone comfortable with that?
Yes.
Yes, with the understanding that
It's going to be back added in next year's budget, I hope, right?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Kate, any other FTEs that we want to, or PTs that we want to cover while we're discussing personnel?
Not from me.
Okay, anyone else have any thoughts on FTEs or part-timers? Okay, that, okay, that covers some very important, some very important items. Okay, I, I start off, I'm sorry, I kind of strayed there a little bit, but I start off by saying, do we have any other big items that we would, we would entertain being reduced or cut?
Not, not for me. I mean, the, these capital projects are pretty reasonable. They've been reasonable for many years that I've looked at them. Occasionally we'll defer things, but I think somebody said earlier that deferred maintenance is, is not a good thing and we should not be overly delaying that. The reality is, is that it has to get done and anytime you delay it, it just, it backloads it into the future. And, you know, we're, we're having to go to somebody, we, we'd have to go to taxpayers in a panic to spend a ton of money because we had all this deferred maintenance, just to keep the place even in decent shape. So I think regular attention to this and regular spending is, is better than trying to, to defer things unduly. So th- these are good proposals, we should support them.
Okay. So what I'm, what I'm hearing is that the proposed expenditures as to what we have in front of us now, everybody's comfortable with, is that correct?
Correct.
You mean for staff?
As to what we can add, but there's nothing that we want to subtract, is that right? Okay. Okay. And we did have one small subtract on the fire marshal. Okay, does anyone have anything they want to discuss putting back in right now? And understand that we don't have to make that decision. You know, this would be a good time to bring them up and let, let other people kind of think about it overnight if they need to and we can come back tomorrow if we don't reach a decision tonight. Okay, Sarah, you are so excited, go for it.
All right, I got my list. I'm going to start in Parks and Rec. Hang on, I got to bring it up. Can we talk about the geese? Can we talk about the geese? Please, Kate?
Yeah.
I can talk about the geese.
Yeah.
I have, I have a personal problem with the geese.
Well, so, this is why I want to put money back in.
Okay, and I have a solution that we have tried at our home that costs us $30.
I didn't take out anything related to the geese.
Well, um, is, is what we have in there enough? Because Tilly is still an issue, Highland sometimes is an issue, like, do, can we, like, what else can we do? We got to address the geese.
I, I don't recommend adding to the department's request.
Okay.
And, and I second that.
Okay. Um, I would like to add the dollars for the installation of the swing set. At Baker.
Okay, with, um, I, I would like to pursue alternative sources of funding for that with the understanding that if they don't materialize, that, that project goes forward. Okay?
That sounds lovely.
I'm fine with that approach, but that isn't it as well.
One thing I'd say about the geese problem is that I would just remind everyone is that if we were back in Texas, this would be an entirely different conversation about controlling geese. This is a northeast problem.
Well, we've tried some different things over the years, haven't we, right?
You haven't tried the Texas solution.
I don't know how legal that is in this town.
John, should we bring up the deer issue from a few years back? And you know how people here felt about that, so.
Yes, yes, that's also a long saga, one with yet another simple answer.
And remember with the geese that you can move them from one place and they simply go to another field in town. Okay, so what we, what we really need to do is get all of the geese to relocate to another town.
Texas.
Entirely.
Or a dinner table, I mean, bay.
Or John.
John's like just permanently remove the issue entirely.
I'm going to get in trouble for this, but.
Yes, yes, we are going to move, we're going to move off the geese right now.
Just a moment on the, on the swing set. I just want to point out that that is a very good example of why we have a process for accepting gifts. Now, this happened to have been one that came internally, it wasn't from an outside source, it was from the Board of Education, but, you know, accepting a gift without having a plan in place for how you're going to utilize it, pay for it, you know, that's something, it's, it's just a really good example why we have to be very conscientious when we accept gifts.
Well, sure, and every time, in my old volunteer job, that was always, you know, question number one, you accept this great gift, you know, you're putting up lights at the high school, all right, well, who's going to pay to maintain that every year? We sort through those problems, but I think with the swing set, it seemed like it was something that it was a, a positive thing, a need. You put it there, you can have, you know, younger siblings who are there watching your older sibling play and go. And then just to, you know, to get that done, to put in the $11,000, if we could raise it, that's fine. But I guess before we, you know, Parks and Rec, just, you know, for efficiency, I was going to propose putting the parking repairs, you know, back in for this year under, it's like a general philosophy, I have, you know, it's always more next year and those parking lots get a lot of use, let's have it looking the way they should, and, in any event. So, I, I would propose putting back $17,500 back in.
Any discussion on that?
A modest sum, I'm okay with it.
Okay, I want to go back to the swing set because I thought we were discussing the Magwon playground. Sarah, you were discussing the swing set, okay.
The installation of a swing set that we.
That's, yeah, $11,000.
Okay. Right.
No, I think we approved a new playground, correct, for Magwon?
It's in there, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that seems like a lot of money just to install a swing set.
$11,000?
Yeah, isn't it?
I think that.
I think it's about the surface, making sure that the surface has to be ADA compliant.
Okay.
Or for insurance purposes, we, you know, we, it's not as simple as just sticking it in like you would have maybe 30 years ago.
Okay. Let's, I'm sorry, let's go back and revisit that. Any thoughts other than what Sarah proposed to adding it back in?
I, I support, oh, sorry. Talking Mike?
Yes, going into general government, oh wait, I, I apologize. Let me get to the right page. Okay, in public works, the.
No, Mike, Mike, we're finishing up the swing set.
Oh, swing, I'm sorry, I thought you were just talking about that. Oh, no, nothing more on the swing set, I apologize.
Okay, are you in favor of adding back the $11,000 to?
I am.
You said, you are, okay. John, any thoughts on that?
Again, it's a small amount, and I can't disagree with Sarah's comment about the popularity of a small asset like that, I'm okay with it.
And that's also, that's also a playground that, you know, is close, closer to the development than a lot of other ones, so. Okay, we will add that back in. Okay, anything else on Park and Rec?
Not for me.
Okay. Okay, um, what do you think is the best way to do this, Kate? Go department by department? Go.
That is, I, that would be, I think, the most logical.
Okay, okay, so, let's, um, looking at the clock here, and.
So, I'm sorry, not to interrupt you, but is your, is your thought that you'd go department by department and ask all of us if we have some change or input, is that the idea?
Right.
Unless you, another approach would be to just say, look, we've all been through the budget, we've had through these discussions, and just go person to person and say, is there some area you'd like to focus on? And then that covers everything, you don't have to march through all the departments, it's up to you, but.
Yeah, I think that's better. Okay, so, I'm looking at Marcy, I see you there. Do you have any items you would like to add or subtract?
Um, no, I feel like, I did make some notes about the increase in salary, the three, 3.2% library salary increases. I, I support it, but I wonder if we could make it kind of aggregated and not, not so fast. I don't know, it seems like a pit, big jump pretty quickly, so, I'm up for discussion on that one.
Um, they, you know what, the library came and gave a presentation, and it was pretty compelling on what they offer for our salary and what they offer for our benefits. And taking a look at other libraries in our, in our, you know, similar to our community, and I think, I, I felt they were, I felt it was competitive. Kate?
Yeah, I felt, you know, they listened to our feedback. In particular, you know, I suggested that they look at the whole compensation package for Darien and compare that to the whole compensation package for the other towns, because it wasn't always about salaries. And I think, you know, they did that and still see a need to increase their wages some. You know, I don't think it's outrageous, and, you know, and as Kira pointed out, they're not in a union situation, so they don't have steps which some, but not all of our comparative union positions would have. So it's not totally out of line with our, our numbers.
Anything else, Marcy?
Nope, that was the only, and then the three, the two cars for the fire department, I had that on my list too. Two or three cars, I just. Will we need all those vehi-, I, I think we need to come up with a better solution, will we need all those vehicles right now, or could we kind of push those out over the course of 18 months?
Yeah, and I will tell you, Marcy, that Ed Gentile and Tony Campanella, who's our facilities manager, and Brian Fransport, who is our mechanic, we have had multiple discussions about it, about the whole fleet, and ways to make sure that we're managing it properly and not overbuying, and not getting rid of things too soon, you know, we, we try and get the most out of a car that we can. So, I'm confident that we're in good spot.
Marcy, you're talking about our fleet, not the fire engines, correct?
Yeah, no, I think it's cars for the fire commissioners, right?
The mar-, for the fire marshals.
Fire marshals, right, okay.
I just want to make sure we're discussing this thing, okay? Okay, um, John, do you have any additions?
Um, yeah, I guess, no, no changes to the budget, other than just to point out two things. I do want to take an additional look at the fire trucks. Kate is obviously well versed in that and can weigh in, but let's take a look at that. I still want to take a consolidated view on IT and fire, despite the comments that were made earlier. Not as part of this process, but, but soon. The other consideration we might make is whether we, we build in a credit into the operating budget, assuming that a portion of the ARPA funds would come and offset the town's budget. I don't know whether that's something we try to do with our budget, or we leave that to the Board of Finance later. We'll have certainly a clearer view as to how we're going to recommend that the ARPA funds be expended by the time the Board of Finance votes on the budget in April. So one option would be to say, they want, we'll, we'll just leave that to them, give them our entire budget, and then if ARPA funds offset some aspects of the PNL, the Board of Finance could come in and simply apply that as a cut, if you will, which would reduce the mill rate. I'd be okay with that. If you all felt strongly, though, that you wanted to take some of that as a credit now, might arguably be a bit premature, but I couldn't disagree that a million dollars wouldn't be applied to the town budget. We could think about that. I, I would, just hearing myself talk through it, I'd probably leave the budget the way it is and let the Board of Finance decide where to put the ARPA credits, because the committee will have come up with its final recommendations by April.
Yeah, I think we, you know, we try not to tax for unknown possibilities, so I don't want a credit for unknown possibilities, so I would, my, my thinking would be away from the Board of Finance.
Yeah, that's fine, I just want to mention that, stressing again, that some of those funds are going to come our way, so.
You might want to consider, you know, as part of the presentation to the Board of Finance, highlighting some of the projects that you feel would be appropriate to be paid for out of the ARPA funds, so even though you might include them in the budget, you know, like the Magwon playground would be a good one, say, you know, we've included in the budget, we think it should happen, but we think it would be an appropriate use of the ARPA money.
Great idea, I like that a lot.
Yeah, that's a great, great idea.
That's it for me.
Okay, Mike, do you have any thoughts?
I do. Going into general government, you won't be surprised here, we say this, the signage request at 100 cut to 20, I'd like to put 30 back in there to take it to 50. I, I, I want to know that those the sort of beautification, reputational things like signs aren't going into any kind of decay, and then, and are, that they're being addressed. I had in police services, putting back the $5,000 in landscaping under the same umbrella, if you will. And then lastly, in Public Works, the conference room remodeling, I'm not saying that because I'm doing volunteer work there, but I feel like that room gets a usage, probably one of the most used rooms in our town. It's on TV when all these boards and commissions are there, and I think that it ought to look sharp, and $15,000 to have it look sharp seems like a wise, you know, a wise allotment, and, and that was it.
I, I'm obviously in favor of the $5,000 for the police landscaping, and any other thoughts on that, anyone?
I'm good with it.
Anyone opposed to that? Okay. Uh, let's, let's talk about the conference room, we had that in. Kate took it out, you know, as an item that, you know, we've been discussing, but we were being thrifty. How do people feel about adding that back in, it's $15,000? Marcy?
I'm indifferent, I mean. I mean, it's, it's not a lot, it's not a ton of money, but I don't, I don't see an extravagant need for it either, but.
I think one of the big drivers for that was to make it ADA, so it would be taking away that step up. And I think that while, you know, we don't have anyone that is in need of a ramp right now, I don't think, you know, that's out of the question going forward, and so I.
I think so.
Being prepared for that is a sound decision.
Okay, that's a sell for me.
Any, any noes?
I'm okay with it.
All right, big jump on the signs, Mike.
Not as big as what was taken away.
Can you remind me what signs we're talking about here?
We're talking about redoing all the signs, all the white signs that are for Darien and our.
But think about at, like, as you come down exit 11, there's a sign that, you know, has the seal on it and points you to different town landmarks, library, town hall.
One over by Giovanni's and.
One over by Giovanni's, there's one on an island coming in from Norwalk. Then there's some other smaller signs, parking signs, you know, throughout town, that could, they're all about 15 years old.
Any noes on that?
Well, Mr. Burke has me trapped, I can't say no, because that would be deferred maintenance, I just said we're not supposed to do that, so. Mike, you got to cut this out, you're giving me a headache.
I, I was gonna, I was gonna say.
That making sense, right?
I, I dropped a little, but, yeah, great.
Yeah, you did mention decay, I think that, I think that sold, John.
I'm, I'm decaying right now, I could use some.
Okay, so, if there are. Okay, if there are no noes, that's a go, okay? Um, we'll add that back in. Um, I have two small requests. One is I would like to take a look at the beautification grant request, and we received more color on that with some specifics on what they wanted to do as far as plantings go and as far as groundwork goes. Kate, did we send that out to people?
I don't recall if I did or not.
Okay. Their total amount, I believe, was $32,000, right, Kate?
Yeah, let me look. Yeah, let me look, um. Okay, I'm downloading it onto my computer right now. I think I am.
Monica, I support this.
Okay, let me see, I can share. Okay, so this is, um, what you see down here where they're talking about the weeding, this is where they broke out, um, the, you know, the non-hanging baskets part, so weeding at the berm, which is the one, um, at the train station, um, new trees. Weeding and maintenance under the birch is at town hall. Those are, you know, if you're coming through the circle, it's the sloped by the, um, the bridge to the gym. So we need a maintenance there. Organic grass treatment at town hall. Removing some invasives by the Mather Center parking lot. Um, they do keep up very nice planters at town hall. And then we have some, looks like new planting projects and Earth Day related expenses.
Any discussion?
I support.
Okay.
I support.
Okay, sounds like that's a go.
They're adding back eleven-five, Kate, to beautification, is that what it is?
Um, I, they're adding back whatever it was I cut off the top of my head. I don't remember that.
I think it was eleven-five, yeah.
Okay, um, I am also interested in adding back to the Chamber of Commerce. Um, we approved a five thousand dollar, correct, Kate?
Ten. They had, um, gotten five last year. They asked for thirty-five this year and I um, cut the increase.
Okay, I, I would like to take a look at that increase. What the Chamber is looking for this year, this, this, for this coming season is to change out, you know how we have the reeds on the lamp posts? They're looking, we have about a hundred lamp posts right now. They're looking at changing from the reeds that if you've noticed are pretty tired to a more standard pine garland that will go up the lamp post and, um, be lit up with, um, LED lights. And I want to consider this, um, I think that it's a more inclusive holiday feel. I think that we will be adding, um, to our Corbin area and to the Rothen Heights area. And the lights are currently up for six weeks. I personally would like to see them up a little bit longer. But I think that it's very important that we have a, um, a, a well-maintained town as far as looks go, but that we also have something special around the holidays. And I'm really, I'm really excited about this. I think that it'll, it'll, um, really liven up downtown and, and the Rothen Heights. And I guess, I feel like this because I, you know, the, the tree lighting at the sports shop this year was floor by the turnout for that and it's kind of the kickoff for the season. We want people to shop local. I think this sends a really good message that the town, that the Board of Selectmen supports our, um, our business community. And so I, I would like to fully fund this.
I'm okay with that.
Do we have any discussion or any no's on this?
Nope, I think it's beautiful.
You're good, Mars? Okay. Sarah and Mike, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, you said yes? Mike?
Yes, yes.
I support it, yep.
Okay, um. Okay, terrific. That was, um, I think that we covered everything, correct? Does anyone have anything else they want to go through?
I guess one thing, and, and I'm on mute, sorry. Um, where did we fall out? I, I, Kate had taken the money out of Woodland parking lot. Mike had mentioned parking lot. I didn't realize that we were talking about the Woodland park, parking lot, which I'm not sure that I agree with that paving thing, but Kate had taken it out and did we say we were putting it back in? I just want to be clear, because that's not something on, I feel like we can kind of move the rocks there and maybe save the, the seventeen-five, so I'm just trying to understand, where did we end up?
Kate, where did we end up on that?
I don't see that you all, um, agreed on that, because you got talking about the conference room and about the signs, but, um, that was a while back in my notes too, actually.
Right.
Um. So I don't think you actually
Is it still out?
Kind of polled everybody to see if they wanted to add that back.
I am not sold on adding that back.
Neither am I. I don't know that I want to see it. I know Kate had moved it on for another year.
We will be presenting you with a full list of all the things you've come up with, so, um, you do have time to say no.
So you'll, you'll give us a list of things we put in and things we put out?
Yep. I don't think you really took much out.
No, I know.
And John's ready to go home.
Uh, I'm, I'm ready to go home.
Kate, do we, um.
Mike, can I see you on that train, John?
Uh, are you getting on the same train? I guess we, I guess I might.
All right, all right, we're not talking commuting right now. Kate, are we, do we need to meet again tomorrow if, um, if we are set?
If, yeah, if you guys are set, you know, what we would do on Monday, when you're scheduled to vote, is, you know, give you the list of proposed cuts and have you actually vote on it, formally, and then give you, you know, based on that, what the total numbers are.
Okay.
So it's up to you whether you meet tomorrow night on, on the budget or not. I think it's, you know, do you all feel comfortable that you've done all you want to do?
And remember, on, on Monday, we will also be voting on the Harbor Master and we will be voting on the, uh, school committee. So maybe meeting briefly tomorrow. Oh, wait, we already are meeting tomorrow. Okay, all right, let's, let's stick with the plan then. We will, um, interview the Harbor Master tomorrow and then we will go out of, uh, executive into, uh, a budget meeting and vote on, um, the specifics, or go through the specifics, I'm sorry. We will still have the formal vote on Monday, but tomorrow.
That also gives us opportunity for public comment, right?
Right.
Yep.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
I think that's important too. I'd, I'd love to hear from any constituents who have any ad- additional in- insight on this, so.
Okay, okay, all right.
So we'll have a list tomorrow? Thank you, guys. Jen and Kate, thank you for keeping up with us as we.
Do you know, do you need, do you need anything else from Jen and Kate other than a list of what we, what we have cut?
Not right now.
Okay.
If you think of stuff, let us know during the day.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Okay.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Jen. Thanks, Kate.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
Thanks, guys.
Good night, everyone.
Recording stopped.